Now I'll call this meeting the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance tonight, also those will be viewing the meeting on G10 television. We're going to begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Dr. Angela Washington, followed by the invocation.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks. To give you thanks for this day and for the blessings that you so graciously bestow upon us individually and as the city of Jacksonville. Remind us, Heavenly Father, that we cannot love you perfectly unless we first love each other. Love each other even though we may appear differently, even though we may believe differently, and even though we may perceive others as our enemy. Help us to understand and to love as you love us, so that when we will have served you and our fellow citizens, that our service will be acceptable to you. We pray this evening, Heavenly Father, for all those service members who are serving us here and around the world, for their anxious families, be with them. And as always, give your guidance and your direction to our mayor and to our council. For all this, we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any discussion. Here, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, so tonight, we're going to have two sections of public comment. I know that some of the people in the audience have probably come, signed up to speak on Agenda Item Number Nine, which is Discussion of Options for Redistricting Committee. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to reserve public comment for that item also. So if you signed up with that purpose in mind to talk about that particular issue, let's wait till the second, the second public comment. And what I'm going to do is preface the second comment, public comment, with comments from the city attorney and let him lay things out as far as the different options. And then we will proceed with public comment on that. All right, so at this time, is there anyone who's present that came to speak about anything but the redistricting?
Did you say that came to speak, or anything but?
Yes.
Yeah, I did.
Please come up.
Oh, all right.
If you would, please give your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Oliver Ford. My address is 311 Burnwood Avenue, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 2540. Now, I was here before, I don't know if you guys remember me.
Yes, sir.
I'm the one that was falsely arrested in December of 2018, December 3rd. Well, what happened was, after I went to court, paid my lawyer, and basically proved that the four officers involved were lying, then the judge decided to make up his own charge and gave me, what is it, interfering with their investigation. I don't see how exactly that works since they trump up the charges to begin with. I was arrested for possession of marijuana and resisting arrest. They have the tapes, I never resisted, I kept asking, what did I do wrong? Why am I being arrested? No explanation. As far as the marijuana charge goes, went to court, proved all four officers were lying, I had the drug test from the hospital, proved there was no marijuana, they said they smelt it on my breath, which they lied. The judge decided, okay, it's unfortunate, I think his words were, Judge Cameron, I believe it was, what he said was, it's unfortunate that it happened to me, and gave me a prayer for judgment. Well, I couldn't tell him where to shove the prayer for judgment because I was in court, and I would have had contempt of court, I'm sure, and that don't favor easily with my lawyer and so forth. So, I didn't say anything, I just refused it, and now it's going to a higher court. Before that, I've never been arrested in my life. I don't smoke drugs, I don't do drugs, don't do it. And it's crazy because when I complained to Internal Affairs, they basically said, huh, this is highly unusual. That's what he said when I went in there, to complain about the police officers. It was Police Officer Barton, Melon, Gilli, which was the female cop, and she was overly aggressive, and I think she got promoted since then, and Wells. The supervisor that was there, he shouldn't be a supervisor. These police officers shouldn't be police in the streets, at least not in a minority neighborhood. The way I looked at it, four white officers, white judge, white lawyer, white prosecutor, what chance did I have? I didn't see much chance, but I'm still pleading my case, I want it off my record, I don't want that crap on my record. It's amazing how they give criminals second chances, and I find it's hard to get insurance written on there. It's just, any government program you're trying to enter, it's hard to get it with crap like that on your record. We've taught our kids to respect the law and take it to court, well, the system failed miserably. And everybody I talked to, they laughed, they smiled in my face, but nobody takes care of it. I want it off my record. And I'll be back every month till it's off my record. I want it gone.
Sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else other than the redistricting issue? If you would, please, sir, your name and address for the clerk.
Name and address. My name is Lethario Tillman. I reside here at 519 West Court. I'm here to put a face with a hotel you guys know all about, it used to be the Red Carpet Inn. The company I work for is called SNL Hospitality, they acquired this property. They are still under the same coordinates of the previous owners, but we're making progress. I have here blueprints, the hotel will become a La Quinta. It's going to be a four to five star hotel. What I'm asking of the city is to merge with us in this project. With this project, if the city doesn't know, they will know, with this hotel, it will bring North Marine Boulevard upscale. When I mean upscale, North Marine Boulevard doesn't have a four or five star hotel. Jacksonville doesn't really have a four or five star hotel. You will. It will not only just be a four or five star hotel, it will be an international hotel. So that means we will be able to bring, you will be able to bring delegates from all over the country to stay there. Also with this hotel, we're looking that it will open up 30 to 60 jobs. With that, I'm overseeing that with these jobs, something Jacksonville needs, I'm not from here, but I've lived in military town, and I have to say, coming here, I was a little ashamed of being a military town. You guys need to start coming up. I've lived in Pensacola, I've lived in San Diego, these are all military towns, and they're flourishing. And the question I asked myself, why is this town not flourishing? It's a military town. Camp Lejeune is the biggest marine base on the east coast. Why is it not flourishing? I'm here to help this town to flourish. That's what I do, I work with hotels. Councilman Jackson knows me very well, I like to get to know the mayor and the other councilmen. I have to commend the police commissioner by helping me, I reached out to them, for beefing up security around here, because of right now, you know, with the drugs and prostitution and all that around here. Most of the ones in that neighborhood knows me, and they know that Mr. Tillman is no nonsense, as I have told them. If I see you on the property, I have no problem on Monday and Tuesday sitting in the courtroom. All I ask is the city, merge with us and help us. I'll be speaking again on other subjects tonight with the city, but I wanted you now to know, there's a face with that hotel in there. So now, when you pass by it, you can see and say, okay, this hotel is about to become a five star hotel, which means all the other motels, they have to beef up. I have to say Motel Six has found out, and now they're making changes, and it's because of us.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Mr. Jackson has a question.
I was trying to, could you say merge with you? What did you actually?
When I mean merge, I've worked with other hotels in other cities, and usually we look at, we have money available, but we like to see the city come in with us if they have money for businesses to help with us, whatever it may be. Because when we do put out for construction, we want to have a thought up there, they're saying that the city of Jacksonville is part of this. Like you guys have the transportation hub, it says the city of Jacksonville is part of what's going on with this. We want the city to be part of it with this. Like I said, with other cities I've dealt with, they have done that. They've merged with the hotel industry as far as helping out. This hotel will help the city out, because I've talked to Fire Marshal O'Kelly, and I've talked to other city officials, and they said, when you guys have to have meetings, the city have to have meetings, usually you have to go to Wilmington or further out, because you don't have the conference rooms. This hotel will have a total of four conference rooms, and it will have two banquet halls and a restaurant, and also other things. So it will help the city, it will help to accommodate the city. We just want to know, will the city help us?
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else come to speak for anything other than the redistricting issue? I see a hand back in the back. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everyone. My name is Melvin Urey, 117 King George Court, War 4. My question is regarding the American Rescue Plan. Rather than give you a long speech, what I'm going to do, I have a couple of questions that I would like addressed when we get ready to talk about it. One, how is the city going to use recovery funds to support immediate economic stabilization of households and businesses here in Jacksonville? Two, how is the city going to use recovery funds to address systemic public health and economic challenges that contributed to the unequal impact of pandemic on certain populations here in Jacksonville? How are you addressing economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries in the public sector? Is there a plan to provide premium pay for essential workers, offering additional support to those who have borne and will bear the greatest health risk because of their services in critical infrastructure sectors? How will they address behavioral healthcare needs exacerbated by the pandemic? Will there be assistance to workers and families, including aid to unemployed workers and job Will there be funding to build the internal capacity successfully implement economic relief programs with investment and data analysis, targeted outreach, technology infrastructure, and impact evaluations? There are a number of other questions I have. I want to wrap this up just by saying, there are many uses that are designated for the American Rescue Plan, and I've heard some of them, but not a lot of them, address the needs of the citizens, the needs of small businesses, the needs of those who were impacted most as communities by COVID, or those frontline workers, and those businesses that continue to try to stay afloat during the pandemic, some of which went under, some of who suffered heavily. What is the plan for that? That's it.
Thanks, sir. All right, so we're going to move on now. We need to adopt the minutes and consent items, and we have some minutes from the April 27th, 2021 regular meeting and the May 4th, 2021 special workshop meeting. Move adoption of the minutes for April 27th and May 4th, regular and special workshop meeting. Second. Is there any discussion? With none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That brings us to Agenda Number Eight tonight, and this is a public hearing on Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, dealing with signage, and Ryan King will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item Number Eight is a Unified Development Text Amendment, and currently, we have many non-residential zones, I mean, I'm sorry, non-residential uses that are permitted, either by, permitted by right or special use, within the residential zones. However, only three specific areas are allowed to have signs, items such as schools, churches, and cemeteries. So if you have a daycare facility or a community center, recreation facility, you're not permitted to have a sign. We are proposing to open up a small monument style sign for all uses that are permitted, either by right or a special use, so that you can have, if you're a business, you can have an identifying sign at your location. So, very minimal amendment. It's been the planning board, they recommended approval. So we're going to, we're proposing to amend Article 512 signage. We're going to delete schools, cemeteries, and churches, and basically just replace it with use classifications other than residential uses. That way, it covers all uses that are permitted. And the standards are eight feet tall, 32 square feet in area, the one per street frontage, so you're only allowed to have one, unless you're, you know, double frontage, corner, triple frontage, then you could have one on per street frontage. And then one other proposal that we're proposing that's not currently in the ordinance is, we want to max it at 20 feet wide. Currently, there's no maximum, we think that's an oversight, we want to cap it at 20 feet wide, which is standard for our monument style signs, eight feet tall, 20 feet wide. So this will open up signage availability for those uses currently not permitted to have a sign, so we think this would be a benefit to those uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have at this time.
I recall, rezoning, we did some years ago on a parcel right off of Piney Green Road, it was like one or two lots, where they, was it a church? Can you recall that? Where we rezoned it, just so they could have a sign, and a...
We do, so we had one recently, the Northridge United Methodist, it was zone residential, we changed it to quarter commercial. The reason for that was, they wanted a larger sign than 32 square feet, and they wanted to have an electronic message center. So this would not open up that type of scenario, but it would allow at least a 32 square foot sign, whereas currently, they cannot have any at all. So we have had several of those that have come through, and that's been one way to kind of solve that problem. But if you can imagine a church in the middle of a residential zone, or a daycare in the middle of a residential zone, the likelihood of that being rezoned to commercial is very unlikely because of spot zoning. So this would at least give them a small, eight foot tall, 32 square foot identifying sign that they could, could place there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to recess the regular council meeting, open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone present wishes to speak to this, issues on number, Article Eight here? Seeing none, close the public hearing, and you're being asked to approve the text amendment for the ordinance.
Sir.
Mayor, I'll make the, the motion that the amendment is consistent with Policy 5.6 of the Kamala Land Use Plan, the planning advisory recommended it, and additionally, the amendment is reasonable and advances the public interest by providing additional options not currently provided for the non-residential use signage.
Second. Have a motion and second, any further discussion. Here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on. Next item on the agenda for tonight is item number nine, and this is a discussion of options for a redistricting committee following the 2020 census. And Mr. John Carter, the city attorney, is going to present some information here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Glad to be back in front of you again tonight, primarily pursuant to your request at the last meeting that we talked about redistricting, is to come back so that the only discussion item tonight on redistricting is whether or not council wants to have a committee or not, and under what circumstances would you want that committee? Before I get to that item, let me just, for the public and for the folks that are here, review where we are. Every 10 years, you have a census, it's called a decennial census, and after the census, if you have wards, as we do, y'all, the city has four wards, you have to make sure that those wards have an equal population, equal by meaning either plus 5% or minus 5%, it has to be within that range. So when that data is received from the Census Bureau, which it has not yet been received, then we will sit down with our GIS person, and we will go over that and make sure, number one, what if any amount of the wards off, and we certainly believe that they're going to be off because of the history that we went over last time, but also, what type of census blocks or units are we going to move to try to maintain Ward One and Ward Four as the minority majority wards? That's the whole purpose of this experiment, basically, keeping our wards equal, but the real purpose is to, again, and I want to reiterate that, is to ensure that Wards One and Two, as best as can be done, to ensure that they are minority majority wards.
You said one and two.
It's one and four, I'm sorry. The wards one and four are the minority majority wards. So, again, that's the whole intent and purpose of this. Now, there are four options that are up here on the screen that we will go over very quickly. Let me say this, though, back in 2010, and I believe also in 2000, we utilized a committee, or the city did at those times, to make sure that the process was done. And the reason committees are utilized in this is because you actually have to sit around maps, and you have to look at small units as far as census blocks, and try to see what the voting history was, and you know, what the population there is, and whether they vote or don't vote, to some extent, because of the base, you know, that's how we maintain our minority majority wards. And to try to do that, that's why the committees have been used in the past. So the first option here is, number one, that you don't want a committee, that you just say, council and staff will do this. And we've already told you last time, we wouldn't recommend this, because this is a very public process. I think the members of the public that are here tonight already indicate to you that they want to be a party to this as far as understanding how this is done, and also, it needs to be open, transparent, and so forth, and when the final product that you review, and they would review also, to understand that we, again, are maintaining wards one and four as minority majority wards. But that is option number one. Option number two is to use the committee of five, and there was really five and then two alternates, that was used in 2010. Option number three is the city council as a body and as a whole, appoint seven citizens to work with staff. And then option number four is for each, the mayor and each council member, to appoint one citizen to work with the staff. We would, and I'm going to come back to those in a moment. We would also encourage you that if, whatever form of committee, if you decide to go with a committee, you decide to use, that these be some of the requirements. And number one, if they're going to be working with us, they need to be a city resident, they must live inside the city limits, be a registered voter. We would, if you go with option number four, that they live anywhere in the city, there wouldn't be a ward requirement of so many from a particular ward, or that you may, if you go with option four, have to appoint someone from your particular ward. And again, that they be available from September of this year, 2021, through February, 2022, because we believe this is the period of time that the work will be done. That is, we're, again, expecting sometime, last heard, sometime in September, getting that data and moving forward with it. I'm going to step out on a limb here tonight. The manager on many occasions makes recommendations to you, sometimes you accept those, sometimes you don't. So you won't hurt my feelings if you don't accept my recommendation, because I, you know, I'm not working against 100% here at all, as you may know. But I'm going to make a recommendation to you, and I want to go through the ones that I don't recommend and why. Number one, I think I've already covered, that is, city council and staff. You need a committee, you need a group of people that you have faith in, that will, in a transparent way, go over this data, and that you're satisfied everything has been done for Wards One and Wards Four being kept minority majority wards. Number two, I don't recommend number two, not that it's a bad idea, but again, we know that at least one of the alternate members, Ms. Brown, has deceased, and as far as I know, no one's talked to the other five. And this, but this is not a process where a group is given that obligation 10 years later. Now certainly, there's some folks on that committee, if you go with my recommendation here in a moment, that you may want to bring forward from that committee, but not necessarily the whole committee, but you certainly could do that. Number three, the city of council appoints seven members as a body. In that situation, you may have one or more council members who might say, well, if council member A and B and C hadn't appointed, I put these names forward, and I didn't get my hand recognized, then I would, I would have put Mr. X or Mrs. X forward. So the one that I'm recommending to you is number four. And I believe number four is the preferred method, because each of you can look to a person who you trust to represent you, your ward at large, the mayor, who you would say would be a good stakeholder. And I know that's the first time we've used that term, but let's think again about this, the whole process. The whole process here is about ensuring our two minority majority wards. Other than that, if we were all, if you didn't have those minority majority wards, and everybody was just, either the wards are the word, you could just actually find out, how do you make it equal here, equal here, equal here, and so forth, and so forth. So there is a process here, and there has to be a trust by you and the folks that you would appoint. I think these folks have to have an interest, number one. May, a lot of folks are interested in the city, a lot of folks are interested in paving and so forth, but this is a, if you go with this option, this is something that folks really have to have a desire to get down and to look at the math, as Dr. Woodruff has already said, to go through the details, and to make sure that when they come back to you as a full body, and can say, we're going to presume as a unanimous board, if not, they're going to have to give us some other ideas, that this is the best we can do with the data that we have from the Census Bureau, the data we have from the Board of Elections, the data we know as far as people's, again, voting history. So again, this is the one that I would recommend, and I would go further to say, utilizing the second slide here, having these as requirements, maybe others that you may think of, and that if you go with option number four, that we report this individually to the clerk between now and the first meeting in August, so the clerk can ascertain if they meet all of these criterias that we just went over a minute ago, as far as being a registered vote, make sure nobody's nominating the same person twice by two council members, et cetera, and that they are, you know, available to serve. And then on the second meeting in August, we'd report that back to the council, that this is your committee, based upon your individual selections, and, again, we would begin the process. Now, we might not have the data then, but we could at least begin by joining together with this group of persons and finding out from them, what's a good time to meet, and you know, their availability, time, scheduling, get them to meet our new GIS coordinator in person, and kind of go over some of the basics as to what we'll be looking at when that data comes in, and so forth. Be glad to answer any questions, but that's my thoughts on this topic. Yes.
Do we make the final approval? Is there a final approval of the, once this is drawn? Is it just?
The council will, it will come back to the council. And it's, the way I recollect it from last time, I always, we had these individual meetings with this committee. They studied this, and they put together a plan. This is what we do to keep this. Then we had the public, we had, you know, come in and let us talk to you, we have an open house, not a council meeting, but kind of, you know, an open house, stop by, and we'll explain the maps, and this is why we moved this block here and that block, and this is what the, you know, the... and this is what the, you know, how we have worked to maintain Ward 1 and Ward 4 as the minority-majority wards. And then, again, hopefully, after we get all that input in, one wants to come for a meeting or two to look at it from the community, just as these folks have come out tonight to hear this presentation, then ultimately, it has to be blessed and approved by the council. And again, like we said last time, there has to be enough time between that blessing and getting with the Board of Elections and making sure that they know where our ward lines are at that point in time.
Speak on why you said you wouldn't go with the original board, again?
Well, the original board, I'm not saying, number one, as far as I know, they all live here in the city, especially the five. And I would certainly encourage you to look at some of those members and bring them forward. You don't have to bring all five forward. You may want to bring U1, Mr. Bittner 1, and some, get some new folks here for the next 10, 10 years from now. But again, I don't think anyone's actually gone out and asked them, number one, that would have, if you want to go that route, and that is fine, I think you'd have to go out and ask and see if all five of them want to, but I think at the end of the day, you're going to probably adding members to it, because I'm not sure all five of those, and as I said, we've already lost, we know one of the alternates, that was Margaret Brown. Mayor, former Mayor Jan Slagel was the other alternate. I don't know if Mayor Slagel would be interested.
Wait a minute, Margaret Brown?
Yes, that was James Brown's.
That's not, she's a lie. She's very much a lie.
All right, then I, that, I was misinformed.
Yeah, she would.
Okay, I know she lives beside you.
Right beside me.
All right, so maybe she, you know, would be interested. I don't know her situation. But you kind of see where I'm going, that, you know, we could have to find out about these folks and see if they're willing and able to serve, if you wanted to go down that route and just say, "We want to use that old board that we used before."
Okay, and you said you had, it was five, and then staff members, that what it?
There was five on the board, and there was two alternates, Ms. Brown and Ms. Slagel, Mayor Slagel, were the two alternates. Robert Sandy, Bob Warlick, Ernie Wright, Tiffany Choice, I believe there's one other. We can give you those names. I'm sorry. Oh, Homer Spring, that's all five, got them all listed. That's right.
Mr. Jackson, I think there's another reason. There are seven of you.
Right.
I mean, if you're going.
I think there was only five.
Yeah, and there are only five. If you're going to have the entire city council vote on it, pick any number you want to. But if each of you feels it's important for you to be represented or have a representative on there, you need seven.
Would that also include an alternate, or did it just be the seven?
If you went with option four, it would just be the seven. And, again, this is not going to be a group that I'm going, think we're going to find 4, 3 votes, or et cetera. The intent and purpose is to go through this process in an educational way to, again, bring everyone into consensus and understanding that we have all worked for that goal, to maintain Ward 1 and Ward 4 as minority-majority wards. That's the sole purpose, really, in keeping our wards equal in population. But again, if someone says, "I need to move thi," I believe we can move this census block here and would be better off with, and our wards would be better maintained as far as wards 1 and 4, then I'm sure the rest would probably go along with that. I mean, this is going to be, I'm envisioning at least, a cohesive group of folks who sincerely want, sincerely want to be a stakeholder and to serve in preserving wards 1 and 4, and as minority-majority wards.
Other questions, Mr. Carter? So, that said, you know, we have people that have signed, I'm sorry.
He's, guy's waving his hand.
I'll sign up for a question regarding this. Is there pro time now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, so the clerk can write that down, sir.
Jacob Evans, Jr., 501 Greenbrier Drive, Jacksonville, North Carolina. I admire transparency, and I would hope the city council would consider staff members, citizens from the communities, in particular Ward 1 and 4, to sit on this committee. To select somebody that has served 10 years ago, to ask them is great. I think we should use their knowledge and get a new board. And 10 years from now, you can have additional, that knowledge is passed on, transparency is passed on to each generation. Those that sat on the board previously, there's no problem with maybe tapping in for their knowledge and how the process went, but 10 years ago, things have changed a whole lot in the last 10 years, and you look at the dynamics of politics now, it will be different. So that's my point to the board, to consider new board members and use those as expertise. Thank you.
For the clerk, please.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Spicer. My address is 59 Kerr Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. I'd like to say good evening, Mayor and councilpersons, city councilmen, city manager, and friends and family. Okay. It's a lot going on. It's a lot going on. I like what the city manager suggested. Let me go back. I'm going to go back even his prayer, because I'm a note taker. In his prayer, he emphasized that we love one another. And once we show that love one another, then there should be some change. I haven't seen much change. If we don't make a change, then we'll be, have the same results we had before. So it has to be a change. I do see some change. I realize I was here two weeks ago, and I saw a change from, before it was majority-minority, now it's minority-majority. Got to get that defined. I'm not sure where that's, had to talk to the city manager about that. But redistricting, Ward 1 and Ward 4 is obviously very important to us. It really is. But at the same time, I'm sorry, I'm doing a lot of stuff here. At the same time, if I'm not mistaken, there are city councilmen that are running, that at large and from the same ward. Please do some check facting on that for me. I do suggest that with each city councilperson, seven, that each city councilperson have an opportunity to select someone that they might want to work with or help, I mean, and then maybe alternates. I mean, it just has to be a fair process. Whatever it takes to be, make it fair, then that's what I suggest. And that's it, and thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Spicer. Yes, in front row.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Owen Hills. I live at 103 King Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. I want to thank the city council and the manager and attorney for allowing this public comment hearing, and also for the presentation and the recommendations. One, I guess first, I want to, I guess I just want to, second, support for the fourth option. I think that each individual council member selecting their own member of the redistricting committee makes the most sense, regardless of whether or not that person is one of the old people or a new person. I think, I agree, I think that that should be up to the individual people, especially in a ward system. It doesn't make sense to not let, if what we're trying to do is preserve the voices of these wards, then the people representing those wards should have, I think, the individual choice to do that. One thing that I wanted to bring up, a question that I wanted to ask, is I know that this is affected by the census, and that our city had a lower turnout for the census this year. And while researching this, I found out that there is such a thing as undercount remediation. And I wanted to know if, if anybody else here on the council, or perhaps the manager or the attorney, had heard of this, if there were any plans to pursue this to maybe, to remedy that, that problem. It's not going to really matter who we choose to write the maps if we're writing them at a disadvantage, you know, based on the numbers for the census. So that's the first time I had heard of that, and I just wanted to bring that up. And the last thing that I wanted to say is, again, outside of necessarily the specific seven people on the redistricting committee, I just wanted to voice that, I think it's very important that an effort is made, just like it is made with the CDBG, I always get that acronym wrong, I think that's right, with the CDBG Community Input Hearings, I think that there should be a similar process where at least one meeting in every ward should be had and heavily promoted to try to get input, again, not just from these seven people, but so that before the redistricting committee decides on something, right, that then, that the city and the redistricting committee can go to the citizens and say, "This is a draft. Nothing's been decided yet. Do you, the citizens, have any input for us to take back to our meetings?" And yeah, those are the three things that I had to say.
Mr. Hill, I think the city manager had a response to, about the undercount remediation that you brought up.
Good to see you tonight, Owen.
Thank you.
The undercount is available, but only from the standpoint, once you have the actual census block data in hand. And then it has to be based upon something that you can prove statistically.
Okay.
What you can't do, and I mentioned this last time to one of the gentlemen who was here, let's say that in your neighborhood, that you look at the block data and you say, "Well, they're not showing anybody living in those houses." If we have a statistical base to prove certain things, such as active water accounts or something like that, but I will also tell you, that's going to be extremely difficult. The real job of the committee is going to be to take the actual block data that the census gives us, whether it's right or wrong, and I think all of us will agree, most likely it's not going to be 100% right. And the job is going to be to decide how we use that to create the boundaries. But I will also say to you this, what we, from a staff standpoint, John Carter, my recommendation to the council, I talked to the mayor and Mr. Carter earlier, because this is a legal process, this is not a, this is a function that the city manager and city staff will be part of, but it will be led by the city attorney, because it is a legal process, and eventually, the city council will have to formally adopt it. My memory is, they'll have to adopt the boundaries by ordinance.
Yes.
Is that correct, Ms. Clerk? Okay. So it's a legal process. You are 100% correct. It's important for us, every step of the way, to make sure that the committee meetings are advertised. While they're not going to be open to the public to participate in, they will be open to the public to experience, meaning any of these meetings, you and anyone else, of course, you may want to be on the committee, Owen, but let's say that you're not on the committee. You'll be able to come and watch the work. They won't be done in private.
That's good to hear.
And then the other part is, once we have come up with the boundaries, and I like the term jello, because jello just gives you a mole, and before you put in concrete, you need to make sure people like the jello mole. So, you know, when we're making jello on these boundaries, we need to take those out and make sure that the public understands why, because what you're, why the boundary is drawn. Because what you wind up with is, just like in the neighborhood I live in, one side of our street is in Ward 3, the other side of our street is in Ward 1. And so people need to understand, why is it that this person, my neighbor across the street, is voting for one city council member, and I'm on this side of the street voting for another? So I can assure you that we will be bringing to the mayor and council a full process that we will ask them to endorse.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate everybody's time.
You raised some very, very good points. Thank you. Ms. Clark?
I am Kiefer Clark, 132 Armstrong Drive, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. And looking at the suggestions that have been made about redistricting, and I'll step back a minute, we have a good slogan, "One city, my city," and all that. But when you come down to the nitty-gritty, it is one city, all one city, but not for every person that live within the city. And when we look at redistricting, we want to be represented. We want the same thing that everybody else want in the city. You have beautification? Yeah, that's good. But I want to live in a beautiful home, just like everybody else want to live in a beautiful home. My children need jobs and whatnot, just like everybody else are need jobs. So when you get people to own committees, make sure that, I tried, you can't make sure that, because people say one thing and do another, but have we have a decent heart that recognize that we are from the same bloodline. The pigment of our skin may be of different colors, but when it come down to needs, desires, and want, we have the very same thing. So when you draw these lines, I hope they will have this in mind, that everybody want a fair shake at whatever Jacksonville has to offer. You know, we talk about people living in poverty. Some people live in poverty, maybe it's their own meat poverty. Other people live richly. That's their business. But you, you have to start from something. And if you don't have jobs that support beautiful homes and all this, you'll never get one. Because I don't have anything to say about fast foods and all this, but fast food is not going to get it. When we have people still getting $7.25 an hour, or $7.50, and when you talk about raisins, I know that's not about redistricting, but I just got to say it. When you talk about $15 an hour, some people go crazy about it. But when you pay people $15 an hour, it goes right back into the economy. They spend those $15 in Jacksonville, because that's not going to carry you far, so you have to spend it in Jacksonville, because you can't buy the gas to go anyplace else. Thank you.
From the left side, next to Ms. Spicer. Address for the clerk.
I'm Marcia Wofer, and I live at 111 Robin Hood Drive in Jacksonville, North Carolina. And I agree with the city attorney's proposal. I believe from the perspective that everyone will have representation on the council, or as long as we have people that are agreeing. I think that Ward 1 and Ward 4 need to substantially stay the same. If we are saying they are minority-majority wards, and that is our goal, and we are following the rules, and it's staying that way, what we don't want to see is having our wards unfairly drawn so that people lose representation. As former Senator Kiefer Clark stated, everyone needs representation, we need to make sure everyone has a seat at the table. So we have two council members from Ward 1 and Ward 4, and if we are looking to make sure that they're properly represented, I don't know if maybe we look at more folks from those areas that would be able to. I don't know the makeup of the 2010 committee. I heard, I recognized a few names on there that might be good names to come back. So I guess I'm saying, from the perspective of, if everyone has representation, that's good, but at the same time, do Ward 1 and Ward 4 and other minority-majority wards have enough representation to make sure that we're following? have enough representation to make sure that we're following that, we're not substantially changing the wards, so that they don't look like they used to. We need to make sure we do have minority representation on the board, because everyone's voice is important. Thank you all.
Counsel, you've been given the options by the city attorney, uh, I'll open it up to y'all for discussion amongst, amongst the board. If somebody wants to make a motion for a particular option, that's fine. If you need clarification, that's fine also.
I'll make a motion that we consider option two, a committee of seven, with the mayor and each council member appointing one member with the full membership of that, of those seven, formally approved by a city council.
You mean option four?
Option four.
Right.
Could we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, are you comfortable with the committee membership, these requirements, and also getting that information to the clerk, so that you can review it and approve it formally?
With the requirements of yes.
And have it, but the first meeting in August, and then the clerk will have an agenda item, the second meeting in August, that you, as a body, can formally approve?
That'd be fine.
That's, okay.
Yeah, this, what's up here is different than what's up here.
Yeah, the smart office looking at it.
Yeah, we, what's pu- what's put on our iPad is different, two and four are interchangeable on our information that we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not correct.
So Mr. Bittner was correct.
Number four.
So number four is actually number two, from what we're seeing. So two and four needs to be interchanged.
But I think, Mr. Bittner, you were clear, you wanted it to be the mayor and each council member to appoint one, uh, person, and then come back to y'all after we get that information at the second meeting in August, for the body, that is the mayor and council, to approve the whole group, after each of you make those names known to the clerk.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I think I understand.
And upon verification that they meet all the criteria that was set forth.
Yes.
Second.
A little discussion.
Discussion, yes.
One of the things I do value is institutional knowledge. And I'm trying to find, I know, from what I understand, that one of the particular staff member that was in that, uh, 2010, 10 group, who's not a staff member right now. And, um, it's hard to find anybody that knows Jacksonville as good as that person does.
Mr. Jackson, he would be an excellent candidate for one of council members of the mayor to appoint. He lives in the city of Jacksonville, I believe he meets all these requirements, I know.
But, but the other issue I have is, the other institutional knowledge as well. And hearing, and I like what you say, you want to move people along, but still utilize that knowledge, because they were there in the process. My concern about each one of us picking one, is that how many council members, to include the mayor, currently lives in Ward Three?
Be three, two council mem- excuse me, four and the mayor.
It's total four, right?
Yes, sir.
And that was a concern that somebody brought up to me.
But they're not the ones who'd be sitting on the committee, they'd be appointing folks-
They still pick who comes from the committee.
Anywhere in the city, though.
Anywhere in the city.
I, I, I do understand that, but these are just, I'm just bringing it to the council based on things that came up from me.
So, so what you're saying, that it could be top-loaded, or top-heavy, from one particular district?
Right, that's, that's the understanding, so I want that to be in the consideration of the process.
And I would say, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Bittner's motion, I think handles that to some degree, because he says, each of you can appoint someone, if it's, but it all comes back to the council at the second meeting in August, that the majority of councils got to be satisfied, this is the group of seven that you want on the committee. If you're not satisfied at that point, if you think some, quote, "top-heavy," end quote, has happened, then you, as a body, do not approve that group.
And that's, I'm just bringing it to make it apparent to the body, that's all.
Let me make one comment on that also. Uh, I will tell you, I know, uh, what I think is an excellent African-American who lives in Ward Three, that one of you may in fact appoint. Uh, I, I think it is dangerous to begin to say, uh, we want to make absolutely certain that one ward isn't overrepresented. I think you need to give yourself as much flexibility as you can, and that flexibility is found in number four. And that is, and in the criteria that, that John laid out to you. You have the ability to point anybody.
Let me say this, and I know African-Americans that I wouldn't want to appoint to this committee. Um, one thing, I'm gonna address what, uh, Senator Clark said, is that, you talk about equity. A lot of times, people say, well, the voting data doesn't say that these people care. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't think it's the people that don't care, they don't think we care about them. Same with the reason why churches aren't being, and I say this all the time, churches aren't being filled, and our voting booths aren't being filled like they need to, because they don't feel like they're citizens. We have to do better at doing that, but I know several people now, Mr. Ward is joining the walking wounded, Sammy's getting better, Mr. Bittner, uh, keeps pushing on, and I've been hurting for over thirty-something years. You'll never hear that most of these folks say ouch. I speak for those people that are hurting, but they don't say ouch. And I just want that to be in consideration as I go forward with this stuff. You know, I, you can't weigh a man's heart out here in the public, you can't do that. But I just hope we could find the best way of coming together, like I said, taking an institutional lo- knowledge, don't think diversity means somebody's that's a different color than me, because their thought process may be totally different. I've, another Navy veteran is gonna be with me against two Marines. You know, in some cases, when we talk about communication. So it's like, I just hope we, we really think about this thing holistically as we go forward, and what's, what this means to a community that's trying to rise, especially all, we're, we're in a reset mode right now, folks. We could say what it looks like, or it's not. My mother, who passed September last year at eighty-six, and a cousin that's turning ninety-seven this year, is saying they have never seen it like this before. And we talking about the state of race, I ain't gonna back down from that no more. I look at it as the state of equity, because we, we deal with equity, at some point, we're gonna deal with race. We gonna deal with issues concerning sexual differences, or economic differences. You know, so equity, not just equal, equity. So, one of the things I know we need to do, is start communicating with each other. Um, Dr. Washington, I know she sat in the real council, you still in the real council? And I'm on the real council, with this racial equity and leadership. They have a great program to go forward, to start having those hard conversations. But until we have those conversations, we're gonna talk about this stuff in little rooms, and all this other things, I think we gotta air out a lot of different things, and the first thing we gotta do, is listen to each other. And I know we talk about civility and, and, and respect, but the truth of the matter is, if somebody look at me and don't respect me, simply because I now have salt-and-pepper hair, mm-hmm, you thought I was going somewhere else, folks. You know, that's where the game, it stops at that point, and that's what we're dealing with right now. And I can't, you know, turn my back and tell you, people didn't get out of the pools at Myrtle Beach, when I used to get in the water there. This is what I saw, I ain't talking about what my mother and them saw. Or going through Smithfield, North Carolina, and seeing that sign up there, and was so glad, when I started going to North Carolina A&amp;T, that I could go around seventy, seven, seventy-eight, and go around that area, because of fear I had. This is a stuff that's ancient history. So if those same people were there to enforce that, those years ago, and my mom just died, and my ninety-six-year-old cousin is still here, should I think that they're no longer, they're not here now, with those same hearts and attitudes? You know, there's a lot of things going on right now. You know, people talk about, um, defunding the police. I would never say defund the police. I called the chief recently about some, call him anytime I can call him, and I have any questions. I don't have an issue with what I have dealt with. I'm not saying things don't happen, but far as, and I tell people, you have a problem, come to me, because I know we can approach the chief of police, you know? But let's have a conversation, you know? You know, I, I say, maybe we need to reallocate some things sometimes, maybe there's needs to be more community policing, maybe the chief just don't know what's going on in your community. Maybe there's just a misunderstanding, but there's no problem with sitting down with them. We don't have those issues that other people have on the scale that they have. And we don't never want that to be a problem here. You know, so, we gonna have to just, like I said, we start looking at things from a, from a, another lens, if we want to keep this idea, and I, listen, I came back home. I, I mean, twelve years, I've been back to Jacksonville, North Carolina, and I'm gonna tell you, I did leave here never to come back. You know why? Because there was nothing here for me, um, growing up, where I thought I could make a life out of it. But every time I, I feel like Michael Corleone, every time I tried to quit, I got pulled back in. I would always come back with medical issues, until I finally decided to come back in, um, in two thousand and seven. Best decision I made in my life. I was on riot, on route to be Director of Veteran Services for the Veterans of Form Wars, but I got a chance to spend time with the best friend I ever had in my life, my mother. But she left me behind here, to do what is right, and I'm gonna get that wrong a lot. I know it. And hopefully, you all, all of you will be here to correct that as I go forward. But, and I talk to Bob about this all the time, I say, we know we disagree on things, but I listen, and I know he listens. You know, Sammy, I know we can have those conversations, but the thing about it, if we don't have these conversations, and we don't, you know, we might hurt each other's feelings, but maybe it's not meant for that. But we gotta start communicating, and let's start listening to each other. So, it's part of a larger whole. Um, that's it, but I just hope we take some other things into consideration, as we move forward in concerning this issue. That's all, Mayor, sorry about that.
Thank you, you're fine. Anyone else, comments, discussion, there? Okay, there's a motion with a second on the floor, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Let's go ahead and take a break, uh, and come back and we'll talk about budget. Okay, so now we're gonna go ahead and, uh, we're back live, and we're gonna go with some budget, uh, discussion, very short, sweet this evening, and then we're gonna recess or close.
As you're aware, we have been meeting for a number of weeks to work on your budget, and you're down to decisions on five items, they're shown on the screen. We know that Mr. Jackson is not feeling well this evening, so we're asking if you would stay in session for one item, and then come back in the next week to cover other items, if that's, uh, acceptable. In the past, you have seen the department issues on the screen, they're called DI's, department issues. Those are the items that departments want in and above their base budget. In the past, you have reviewed with the city manager and with the public, the recommended DI's, it's my understanding you've approved those. It's also my understanding that you have agreed with the city manager on denying a variety of the department issues. The one issue that is pending, that we'd like to spend a moment on this evening, is additional officers for the police department. I'd ask Mike if he would come up, please, and, uh, any of the other personnel that you have. When you talk about, uh, the police department, we do have, uh, a new development, and that is the fact that, uh, in the last several weeks, it's come to our attention, that there are federal funds available through the COPS grant. Now, in this case, this is not new, over the last probably ten or fifteen years, Mike, uh, the city has, uh, has used the COPS grant program to add a number of police officers. So what we'd like to do is talk to you for a moment about the COPS grant, and then help, then ask you to give us some direction, wide direction. If the grant is to be filed, the, because it has financial implications to the city, we've always agreed that any grant that has a financial implication to the city must be approved by the city council before it's filed. And then, if the grant is awarded, you have to agree to accept the grant. The grant is through the United States Department of Justice, the Office of Community Oriented Policing, and as you know, one of Mike and the police department's hallmarks is community-oriented policing. It's a competitive process, this is not something you file the grant, you automatically get the money. It's a competitive process. And of course, it is called the COPS Hiring Program. How does it work? Every time the COPS grant comes out, there are different rules. In the past, it's been 100% funding for one year, 75% funding for the next year, 50% funding, or some other formula. So this grant is set up this way. The grant is 75% for salary and benefits only. It is then 25% on the city for salary and benefits. And that is actually locked in for a three-year period. In past grants, every year it declined, 100% federal, 75% federal, 50% federal, and corresponding increases with the city. This grant, though, is a three-year grant, it's locked in for salaries and benefits, it's 75% federal money, 25% city money. Also, the grant requires 100% of the city funding for equipment and any other items. Any other items would be things like uniforms, bulletproof vests, whatever it might be. The filing deadline is June the eighteenth, and that's why we asked Mr. Jackson, I know he's not feeling well, if he could stay so we could at least discuss this. When you look at the original request from the police department, they asked for six officers. What Mike and the staff have done is, they have prepared three options, six option, I'm sorry, si- option one is for six officers, option two is for three officers, option three is for two option, two officers. I'm getting my, my O's confused, Chair Mayor, the options and officers. What I'm gonna do is walk you through the financial implications of six officers, three officers, and two officers. And then after that, Mike would like to make some comments about this. Six officers, wages, benefits, recurring cost, one-time cost, six hundred and two thousand. What are the one-time costs? That's buying police cars, buying the initial uniforms, buying weapons, whatever it might be. So those are not recurring costs. The other thing to remember is, when it comes to police vehicles, we do not pay cash, we put them on the three-year payment plan. So that $236,000, or its equivalent reduced number for the other options, is not actually cash full, it's spread out over a three-year period. In this, the equipment is financed over three years, reducing the upfront cost, other recurring costs would be absorbed by current budget, equipment costs could be offset by a combination of grants and so forth. Let's look at what the federal government would cover. They would cover wages and benefits for six officers, $260,000 each year for three years, FY twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. They do not cover any recurring costs, they do not recover any equipment costs. On the other hand, the city on six officers would be $86,000 and change, we would cover the recurring cost and the other cost, so what you're looking at is, uh, you know, with the equipment and so forth. So the key is, from a wage and benefit standpoint, $86,000 for the city, and from a wage standpoint, three hundred and sixty, uh, $260,000 from the federal government. Option two is for three officers, and as you can do the math, it's reduced. So in this case, the total between federal and the city- So in this case, the total between federal and the city is 301,000. And you can see the breakdown, 75%, 25%, and then option two gets even further down. And that is wages total, 115, total package, 200,000. And you can see again the breakdown, 75% personnel for the, for the federal, and then these costs. So if you went with any of these options, you can see what you're doing is you're obligating the city over a three-year period. Once the three-year period is over, 100% of the cost comes to the city. There is a requirement in the grant that you must keep the officers employed for one year after the grant. Now, the reality is every time that we have gotten officers through the COPS program, we have kept them on permanently. So I don't think anybody should walk into this program saying, "Well, we can do this for three years. We'll keep them onboard one year, then we'll reduce the staff." That's just not realistically, you know, how it happens. So what I'd like to do now is ask the chief to talk to you about his feelings of the need for officers and why he's asking you tonight to authorize him to file the grant. Then I will come back with some closing comments. Mike, please.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Mayor Council, I, I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about, uh, about this, this request. Part of our concern, um, we answered 155,000 calls for service in 2020. That's a 5% increase from 2019. From 2016 to 2020, we've seen a 25% increase in calls for service. The bulk of those, that increase is citizen-initiated calls, which increased by about 33%. We've seen a 24% increase from 2016 to 2020 in shooting-related calls for service. And, um, we've seen a 53% increase in seized firearms. And our available patrol time has dropped from 33% to 24.8%. So I think part of our concern is, is that with the increase in calls for service, with the increase in, in violence in our country and, uh, the, the, the number of firearms, that we need to be more engaged in the community policing process. Now, of all those statistics that I've mentioned, the thing that worries me most is that we're spending more time on calls. We went from an average of 45 minutes to an average of an hour on calls. And some of that is because of de-escalation, some of that is because of the CIT training. And that's, um, that's really inhibited us from doing community policing and engaging in the process. So when this grant came along and, and part of our, our concern is being able to maintain that engagement with the, with our citizens. And I think we've, uh, we've exhausted every method we can to take, uh, officers that were assigned to, um, administrative duties, put them back on patrol. And, um, I, I am concerned that we want to maintain that ability to engage our community. And I think, uh, I think this is an option that we can do that. I'll be glad to answer any, any questions or...
We wanted to mention that, if they pass on this, any additional officers that they want to fund, they're gonna have to fund themselves with no grant assistance.
Yeah, if, if, um, I think, uh, Dr. Woodruff and I've had some discussions about this. If we're gonna hire officers, this is probably the, our best bet to do it. The COPS grant has changed a little bit. It focuses on some, some key areas, uh, the violence associated with firearms and mental health training. So part of this program would be part of that. If we need to add officers in a year or two years, then that would be fully funded by the city, and this is an opportunity to get 75% of their salaries through the grant program.
Let me ask you this. What, uh, what are the basis for awarding the grants, uh, for a COPS grant? I mean, is there a certain criteria that you must meet in order to receive the grant?
Well, actually, the only real criteria is that you're a police department or a sheriff's office. But these grants are gonna be a little bit different than the COPS grants that were several years ago because they're going to really focus on that compute, community engagement and the community policing process. So as we write the application, the, the things that we're gonna really focus on is how can we reduce gun violence in our community? And how can we improve responding to mental health services in our community? We've done a lot of work with the mental health services. We've done a lot of work with violence prevention. This gives us an opportunity to engage the community more. Again, the, one of the things that really concerns me is the nut, the hours that we're spending on the calls because it's going up because of, of, of good things. I mean, we're, we're learning more about how to de-escalate calls and how to relate better on calls. But it's having an impact on, on days off. It's having an impact on training. It's having an impact on responding, um, to, to calls for service, especially with the increase in the demand of services. And, and citizen-initiated calls are, are something that we look at because those calls are initiated by the city, the citizens, and not self-initiated calls. And that's where we've seen the greatest increase in our, in our demand for services.
Adding, the, the whole overtime issue with days off, even if you hire new people, wouldn't that just tack on to that exponentially as far as the overtime? Officers are gonna work overtime. It don't matter how many officers you have, you're gonna have to work overtime.
Well, um, yeah, officers are gonna have to work overtime. There's, there's no, there's no way around it. We think that adding additional officers to the shift would reduce that amount of overtime or that demand for overtime. Some of that overtime includes, uh, where they work over the, over the shift because of, of shortages in the shift. And, uh, adding additional officers will definitely reduce that. And we've worked to, uh, to look at our overtime and to try to reduce it in a number of different ways. Yeah, of course.
Excellent. Crime rate, I guess, is comparatively to other cities. Do you think that would hurt us in the grant process? Or is that something you have to submit? Or they obviously know?
It is, it is based on your violent crime rate. So we lost the grant that last time because of that. But those grants have changed somewhat, and the focus has been community engagement. And that's why we think that, uh, we have a better chance this year than we did the last time because it is focused on community engagement, the mental health piece and the violence piece, the gun violence piece. And we have seen an increase in, um, in people carrying firearms and then, uh, obviously calls for service related to firearms.
How many are you asking for? We've, we've had presentation on, on a couple of different options here. What, what are you, what are you gonna be filing for?
Well, I, I think that's where we need some guidance here. I mean, obviously, we'd like to have six, but, uh, but, I mean, we, we'll, we'll take whatever we can apply for. You know? And I, and I mean, I think there's, there's an opportunity maybe to look at three and then revisiting it in a year or two and, and seeing how, um, the demand for service goes.
Do you think you have a better shot at, at getting two officers than, than six? I mean, would your grant application be more competitive perhaps at two?
I don't, I don't think so, but I, I don't know that. I think the, uh, the idea behind the grant application in this process is focused on the community policing process. So, um, it depends on how many agencies apply, and it also depends on, um, how, how they all shake out and what their proposals are because it is a competitive process. I will say that sometimes, uh, um, when we have applied for this grant, we've applied for six officers or five officers, they've come back and said, "We're only gonna give you three." So that's a, that's a real possibility depending on, on the process and depending on, um, how many people apply and, and those kinds of things. I think it's $158 million that's gonna be set aside for that.
My feeling is we've got a, like, uh, like we said, we have a, a crime rate that's, we've experienced, that's been descending over the last couple of years. Jacke Field's population is continuing to grow and probably see that trend continues. I'd hate to see us step backward if there's an opportunity to keep pace and get ahead of the curve by not hiring some police officers in. I would support three.
Chief, I'm assuming that, uh, that you feel like you're gonna be able to fill the current vacancies and therefore you, you're, you're optimistic and, and wanna proceed with this?
Today, knock on wood, we have, uh, six vacancies, four over-hires. And we have 16 certified officers that were in some form or fashion in the, um, in the, in the process. In January, we were full-staffed. And, uh, it just, it's just, we had some retirements, and then the climate caused some, some officers to leave. And with us, I'm sure it was the same when the mayor was, uh, was on the police department. Because of our military affiliation, we lose a lot of folks in this kind of time period because they're being, uh, their spouses are usually reassigned. And so that, that always, this time of year always makes for a, um, a dry period for us because we, we hire from this class starting in January, it finishes in May, and then we don't, uh, if we wanna get uncertified folks. And then it, the, the academy doesn't start back up until August.
What is an overhire?
So what we do is in, during the academies, during the VLET programs, we hire four officers over what our authorized strength was. And so that gives us an opportunity because it takes us, it's, it's 42 weeks to train and hire a police officer. And so that, that, uh, so what we'll do is we'll hire those and then attrition will bring us back to what our authorized level is.
And the nice thing about the overhire is we don't actually budget. We assume you're gonna have vacancies and the money for the overhires is picked up through vacant positions. Are you ready for my recommendations? Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Please.
How are you trending on the mental health? Are you having a whole lot more calls now? What are you seeing in the last couple of years?
You know, you know, we, we saw a, we saw some decrease, we saw some decrease in opioids and mental health. But during COVID, those things have started to increase. In fact, last year, we, we're, and we're not talking about suicides or anything else, just crisis intervention calls, we responded to around 1,000, uh, crisis intervention calls last year. So, um, and, and we, we have some good things going. We have, uh, obviously the two counselors, but we're also working on a partnership with , uh, Onslow County where we're gonna have co-responders, the community paramedics. So, um, the demand for services for mental health is, has increased during COVID, and, and that skewed our numbers just a little bit.
So how many, how many are you short now as far as filling your total authorized?
We're six, six officers down. We got one starting next week, so we'll be five down. Uh, we've got 16, uh, certified applicants. So we're hoping that within the next, uh, 30 to 60 days, that we'll be close to full
Mr. Manager, could you have your recommendations there?
I want everybody to understand that the city manager's office, uh, we strongly support a quality police department. But I also remind everybody that as the manager, it's my responsibility to look at the whole organization and to look at all the goals that y'all have. And like anything else, it comes down to one thing. And how do you spell it? The green. I would spell it, but as you know, Gail doesn't let me do math in public, and she doesn't let me spell in public. It all comes down to money. I don't recommend filing the grant, and here's the reason why. If you do, you've already stated you're not raising property taxes. And you know that this year, the entire budget's been put together, and we're spending more of your fund balance to balance the budget this year than ever before. If you, whether it's two, three, or six, the money's gonna have to come from the general fund reserve. Also, it's recurring expenses without recurring revenue. Anybody who's been in business knows that's a formula that you just cannot accept. If you're gonna have expenses, you have to have recurring revenue. One of your priority has, has been, how are you gonna fund paving? And later tonight, now to be later next Tuesday night, we're gonna be discussing what do you wanna do with paving? Because the dollar can either go this way or it can go that way. The other thing is the challenge of funding competitive wages across the entire city. Right now, I can tell you, we have over 40 vacant positions citywide because, and some of them are seasonal, but because we are not paying a competitive wage to attract people. Uh, also, we're very blessed. Mike and the police department are to be commended. We have a low crime rate. And the grant may not actually be awarded because it is such a low crime rate. And then the last is we've had difficulty filling the current vacant JPD positions. So I'm recommending to you that you don't authorize filing the grant. On the other hand, I will mention two reasons why maybe you should file the grant. If growth is going to require you next year to add police, we don't know whether the COPS grant's gonna be available next year. And if you don't apply this year and there's no COPS grant available next year, then everything I've just said here is even worse because you'll be funding 100% of it. One thing you could do is give direction tonight that says, "We will agree to fund whatever," with the understanding that you will not make a final decision on that until October, when, I believe that's the date you expect to hear whether the grant. And at that point, you could either accept the grant or not accept the grant. So anybody have any thoughts about my, my very unpleasant but realistic, uh, thoughts?
Well, I'd actually wrote a little note here, stick a pin in it, till we looked at some of the other items that, that are in the budget, you know, and see how that flows and then come back to it.
Certainly do that. The filing date, I believe I said was June the 18th. I believe that's wrong. What's the filing date, Mike?
June 18.
June 18. Okay.
I have a question. Let's say you apply for six and they approve six, and you come back for, for approval. Could we say at that point, uh, "No, we, we're only willing to fund two or accept two"? Is that a possibility?
Uh, it's a possibility.
It would look bad, I bet.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure we'd wanna do that, but... Well, typically, they've come about, um, usually every year. Some years, they, they failed to fund it, so they didn't. So, I mean, it could come next year as well, but we don't know that. It, it's funded every year.
What areas? Is it just North Carolina? Is it just?
No, it's the entire nation.
Oh, wow.
158 million is for the entire, entire nation.
It's through the U.S. Department of Justice.
Thank you very much. I believe, Mayor, you were suggesting we simply, to use your terms, stick a pin in it and discuss it later.
The chief has some valid, valid points there that, you know, you know, I don't think we should just throw it out in the wind right now, but at the same time, we need to look at, you know, what kind of impact is the employee increases, you know, which, you know, we haven't talked about yet. We haven't really talked about the paving. We really haven't talked about the sanitation and, and the recycling. We haven't talked about a lot of... We haven't talked about a lot of things. You know, what kind of impact is that going to have? We said going into this thing, we weren't going to raise property taxes this year. And I'm hoping that we stick to that premise, that we won't do that. So...
Thank you very much for your time. And do you have any objections if we meet the 5 o'clock hour next Tuesday to continue our deliberations?
Hopefully, everybody be healthy and ready to go. 5 o'clock next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Take you to fill out one of these grants. You know, it's not, I know it's not just fill in the blank.
Don't waste time. Do you actually believe the chief fills it out? It takes him about 30 seconds to say, "Ashley, please take care of filling all this out."
Probably a template, pretty much.
You adequate time.
Yeah, it does. It'll give us plenty of time. We've already preliminarily put some stuff together, just to, so we'll be ready to do it.
Thank you all very much.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and go to the reports for this event, and... No report from Mr. Jackson.
The only reporters on was will be, is prepared to adopt their budget Thursday evening. That's all I have to report.
No report, thank you.
I know you are. One thing, I did have the opportu, I'm sorry. I really apologize.
No, you're fine.
I'm so used to Carmen and Ron being right there, I don't even think about it anymore. But, we're good? Okay. I did have one thing. I was very pleased and honored to go Fri, this past Friday morning, to speak at the law enforcement, or Peace Officers Memorial Day Ceremony. It was held at the Public Safety Building over there. You know, being a veteran police officer with 30, 31 years, close to, or almost 32, it means a lot to me personally. Two of the people, the two people that were memorialized on the marker there at the Public Safety Building were my coworkers. Matter of fact, Terry Lee Lanier, worked, he was working in patrol, actually, had been, he was assigned to Traffic Division. I remember the day he was killed, my shift was getting off and his was coming on, and I had a conversation with him in the locker room at the police station, joking around, just joking around. I would go home, after being up, working midnight shift, I'd go home. The next thing I know, I'm woke up around 11:30 that Officer Lanier had been killed. Bill Whitehead was another one of my officers that worked for me. He was later promoted to a detective position. This was in 1981. And he was murdered by two individuals who knocked him unconscious, handcuffed him behind his back, and threw him in the New River to drown. But it was, it's always an honor, you know? It's just like being a Marine. Once a Marine, always a Marine. Once a police officer, always an officer. You know? It's just the way, it's just the way that we're, we built after you do that, work in that profession for so long. The Peace Officers Memorial Day was established in 1962 by President John F. Kennedy to honor peace officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice or been disabled in the line of duty. And here's a video production of the Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony. You can find it on the city's Facebook page. And with that, Mr. Woodruff.
Great news. Get your bathing suits out. Splashpads will open this coming weekend at your request.
Mr. Bennett?
See you there.
Time for 91-degree weather.
That's right. And also, Friday night, we will have our first movie in the park.
Speedo.
Free to the public. Remember, Splashpads are free, and the movies in the park are free.
How's our amphitheater doing? We going, going to have some events coming up here?
Actually, the movies in the park will be at the amphitheater.
Okay.
Do they get fixed?
Yes, we have been able to repair those, and so, like I said, bring your children, bring your neighbor's children, bring your wife. It's open to all. Thank you all for what you do. It's always a privilege to work with you. Thank you.
It's a move.